Okay. Hey, we'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Cambridge City Council here held at and it's currently 7:04 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which it stands. In the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Must have thought we were singing. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the current agenda, approve the minutes of regular meeting on October 15th of 24 and special meeting on October 28th of 24 and approve payment of bills.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two. Sandra, do you want to introduce that?
Sure. So, we've been working on the area of impact because there was new legislation that came down from the legislature this last year and we're required to review with the county the area of impact by the end of next year. But we were wanting to kind of get going on it anyway because we're hoping to change some of our ordinance with the county as well on how things are handled in the area of impact. So, I know I had a couple of questions here earlier in the meeting and so maybe to help clarify, I thought I'd read a little bit that's out of the area of impact code. And it says, "Areas of impact should be established, modified, or confirmed based on the ability and likelihood of a city or cities to annex land within that area of impact in the near future. A city may adopt a comprehensive plan and conduct infrastructural capital improvement and other planning activities that extend beyond its current area of impact." And then it talks about that I have, but I mean, it can be reviewed more often than that. It says, "In defining an initial area of impact or modifying or confirming existing area of impact, the criteria set forth in this subsection shall be considered: anticipated commercial and residential growth, geographic factors, transportation, infrastructure, and systems including connectivity, areas where municipal or public sewer and water are expected to be provided within five years, and other public services district boundaries. In addition to this criteria set forth in paragraph A of this subsection, an area of impact shall not exceed the areas that are very likely to be annexed to the city within the next five years, except as otherwise provided in this paragraph. An area of impact shall not extend more than two miles from the existing city limits. An area of impact boundary shall not divide county-recognized parcels of land. If only a portion of a recognized parcel falls within the two-mile limit, then the boundary may extend beyond the two miles on that parcel." So, that encompasses the entire parcel. It also talks about that the applicable county may adopt individual county comprehensive plans in zoning and subdivision ordinances. And that's the part of it where we're going to be proposing to Washington County that we go by city ordinance and not Washington. Well, our comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinance, and our subdivision ordinance. But I have talked to legal counsel since we last talked and stuff and he thinks that the ordinance that I have in your packet is probably ready to go. But one thing he said, "We will need, we can't use a blanket just say we adopt, you know, for them to adopt ours." That we will have to, there are some of them that won't apply, like our minimum lot size probably won't work for water and sewer and everything in the impact areas like that. And then it also talks about persons living within the delimited area of impact shall be entitled to representation on the planning, zoning, or the planning and zoning commission of the city of impact. Such representation shall as nearly as possible reflect the proportion of population living within the city as opposed to the population living within the areas impacted by the city. And so, that's one thing the city is going to need to establish a planning and zoning commission again and it will have to include people in the impact area as well as in the city lands.
So, we're looking for volunteers.
Yeah. So, what the proposal is, our current city impact area takes in the four sections, two, three, 10, and 11. And we're proposing taking some of the specially agricultural land out and trying to pull in the impact area a little bit, taking ag land. And there is a new agricultural protection area legislation and the county's having a hearing on that in about three weeks where people, agriculture, can go put it in a bank through the state for 20 years and so it can't be touched.
Kind of like CRP then?
It's kind of like that, but there's no financial incentive yet. So, they don't really, they hope the legislature does something about that this year. Otherwise, there's not a big incentive to put it in right now. But they can, so, you know, it's locked up for 20 years. But then they can take it out anytime too, is what the legislation is right now. So, it's kind of confusing. So, but then also our impact area, we were trying to get more in line with what the new code is, that it has to be areas that we believe will be, have water and sewer services in the next five years and be annexed into the city. Which is pretty hard to say, I mean, we haven't, we've had one annexation in the 18 years or so that I've been here. So, the likely, and that was just getting everyone that already had water and sewer services into the city limits. So, but with the possibility in mind, we know that there's a good possibility for growth. So, we felt that we needed to have some areas and we don't know which way people are going to want to go for growth. So, we tried to have some all around the city. So... Is there any other part of it you want to present to them?
So, can I ask a question? So, and I really, you know, concerns, and this is coming from a few people that we've talked to, is if they've already spent the money on well and septic, do they have to comply with city services? Because that is already there in place for them.
If they're annexed, you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
Only if.
I think that that is a very legitimate.
If our main reaches that far.
Right. It depends if.
If they're annexed, but the water line.
I'm just kind of wondering how far you guys are from that, I guess.
Yeah, it's in there.
The law is if our, if our lines reach to your property, you're required to connect.
At your expense or at the city's expense since you've already put your infrastructure in?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't already put our infrastructure in anywhere.
Their infrastructure, they've already put in a septic and a well. They've already spent the money, now do they have to spend again to connect to us?
I know the hard way, yes. Had to do it.
Well, I almost speak out, I don't know where you guys are going, but but I think if you have a well, I mean, I like how Weezer has certain areas that they still allow wells for irrigation. I think it's such a waste to disconnect that and not use that resource.
I think, yeah, you can have a well on the property and as long as it's not connected into your house that's connected to the city, you can use that well for all the irrigation you want.
Yeah. I think that is a good, you know, something in there. I mean, I know animals, you know, I think that's one of the purposes. I mean, we were annexed when we were Boise and we were promised the light, which was never happened. You know, it's like, you know, there's a lot of things that they, you know. But, but I think if, you know, for the septic, you get bigger, you can't have, you know, lines into other people's property.
We look at it though.
I mean, it was a great example. But, you know, having a well and be able to water that amount of property, you know, that's a lot of money power here.
My thought on that is the city is never going to put infrastructure in unless there's enough dense development in order to pay for it. Because it doesn't make any sense to put infrastructure in if it's a house every acre or every five acres or 20 acres or whatever. So, realistically, that would never happen.
Yeah.
Type of thing unless there was dense development somewhere.
Yeah. I mean, even the call, we've developed our.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just trying to, you know, because people have asked us lately.
Uh huh.
I mean, that's a good answer.
Well, our biggest concern with our area of impact was that we were just too sprawled out. I mean, we were just too far out. There, there's no way that we would annex out that far in the next five years, in the next 10 years, the next 20 years. You know, given our history, you know. And so, we, we just tried to shrink it up as much as we could with potential for annexation or growth, but not overwhelming annexation and growth. So, we're trying to be conservative, yet realistic, sort of, we think. I, I don't even.
It's hard to tell, is it.
Well, yeah, I don't even.
If it does happen, watch out.
Yeah.
I mean, just look at Weezer and I, since we work a lot in Weezer, just, it's gone crazy on that.
Yeah.
Agree with, you know, expanding and peaking ahead. I just don't want to hurt the people that are already in there, you know, that.
Yeah.
That have the animals or have the infrastructure already in place.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just things that we think of every day. Not think of, but people.
Wells, that's nothing that, even if you were required to hook up to city water, you might be required to, whether you use it or not, that's your deal. You might have to still pay for it. But you have, we don't encourage wells, you know, they don't want us to encourage wells. But you have the right to use that well regardless, you know. So, they could never take that, they can't take that right away.
Yeah.
The city has all on wells here, so that would be a hard thing to water.
Yeah, city water.
Catchy, catchy.
Yeah, for sure. Can't afford to be buried.
Can you even afford it now as it is?
So, Mayor, since this is public input, can I put some input in aside from being city clerk?
Okay, you'll have to sit out one of those.
It's just a post that I saw on Facebook that kind of summed up a lot of people's thoughts I thought of. So, I thought maybe it'd just be good for people to try to think about it a little bit. It was on a Facebook post where people were complaining about the new McDonald's and the new apartments going in in Payette. Do you guys know on 95 where the new McDonald's is? People are, yes, I know. He's got it on his list.
Hey, that could be Cambridge.
We need Maverick.
None of Maverick.
So, anyway, this is why one comment was, and this is just one comment, but it kind of hit me. He said, and this was from Troy Bruce. He said, "I lived in Payette all my life. It's hard to imagine seeing improvements to our community as a negative. We have many disheveled properties around the area. I would rather steer our city into getting a few of those properties presentable. In most new apartment complexes, the development investors want to keep their properties in top condition. The new McDonald's brings more jobs to the community. Small restaurants like McDonald's are considered economic and social infrastructure of towns. If you'd like to see lower property taxes, then we need more manufacturing, manufacturing or industry tax base in our area and with that, additional housing and services. How about taking some of your thoughts and energy and go to a city council meeting? Find out how to submit ideas for change. Follow up with council members. Be the change. Our community is growing, it's inevitable." That part really kind of hit me because we're excited we have someone at our city council meeting. Long story short with a point, bear with me. My father served as a member of Payette County Planning and Zoning Committee for years. I learned District Supervisor for Soil and Water Conservation. I attended one of their tours. We were up below the water tower in Payette looking across the valley. Members from the Fruitland area who was a large landowner, he started talking. He made this comment. "I moved here on May 6th, 1962. I wish on that day they would have passed a moving here." I turned to him and said, "I wish they would have done that on May 5th." It took him a minute to understand what I had just said. A couple of the other members laughed and turned away. Lots of people screamed, "Not in my backyard," forgetting that they moved here in someone's backyard. "The population is expanding. We all want a place to hang our hat. Make the best of it. Smile and wave because that's what we do in Idaho." Anyway, that, a lot of that kind of rang true for me and, you know, we don't want it in our backyard, but it's inevitable, you know, we're going to deal with it, you know, type of thing. And so, that's kind of how our area of impact is a little bit. We're going to have to deal with growth probably with what we know that's going on around us.
Yes, we are. Okay, is there any other comment on our area of impact?
Would it be possible for somebody like council to present somehow, newspaper anyway, a drawing of a map that's easily readable by Cambridge people?
And I don't, and so, I got the best map we could possibly get without any legal descriptions and stuff.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I know, not this is a criticism to what we talk, but did this information that might relate to some of those conditions? Isn't there a two, two-mile condition on impact zone?
Yeah, but this is right within that because we could review all four sections.
But to tell us what would be out to it if we went farther out to it.
Yeah, but we're bringing it back in. We're already out there, we're not even two to two miles though.
But there are pieces that you could trade off as possible. I haven't really studied this thing as far as which pieces there are, but.
It's bringing it back in.
But you didn't take the city, I mean, you didn't, whoever did the map, I'm not saying we did the map. But just showed in the shadow where the two miles would be around Cambridge, if that's the limit to an impact.
But we don't want to be out that far.
I know it, but that's not saying cut it for there. Tell people where it is. You know, most people in town do not, they have in their heads a clear map of some of this information. And I think it needs to be gotten and not to leave out the things that you might most get the most argument from. You know, obviously the shape, there are pieces on the bottom there that could go farther or that might have.
Well, see, we have to follow property lines. If you had a piece of property that was right there, we couldn't draw a line through the middle of it and cut it in half. We'd have to take your whole parcel. And that's why the map is the shape that it is because we tried to take ownership and put a whole complete parcel into the area of impact without reaching way out.
Way out.
And so, we tried to pull it back in and we had to go on the boundaries of parcel ownership.
And we don't want it to reach out because of the new law. It, it would make us in violation.
And, yeah, much more. But it's just, with a little few more labels on it, roads, the river, you know, so that there is a field.
Yeah.
And it could have.
I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying. We just don't have the capability of doing it, is the problem.
We need to tell Washington County that you had, the map wasn't very good.
Yeah.
It's the one they use, yeah, and it's usable for most of.
It shows all the parcels and the main roads and things like that. And if people knew where the parcel was, they would be able to figure that out.
It's in the school and that the kids play with it for a while and, you know, what we're dealing with.
You want, right.
And this also was on Facebook, the map and the new ordinance and things, trying to get it around for people and make it blow it up and.
And some of the other pieces of information that might be usable in considering, not fighting necessarily, but considering. You know, is some of that agricultural thing nowadays really mining? And is mining considered valid within agriculture? You know, those are some questions that are very complex, but they're, they're basic questions that could be, not, they're, I think they're about, you know, vision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, none of our area touches mining.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, mining's.
It's the zoning kind of thing. That's zoning. Just get something clear. I mean, we can do, anybody.
Well, if we could blow it up to that size, we could probably tell what it was.
Yeah.
The problem is it's so small, you've got to have a magnifying glass to look at it. I agree, and I get that because I'm there.
There's some interactive online.
Yeah, I can, I can show you guys how to use the.
Oh, I'm well versed in it.
We can't go make our own maps anymore. We used to be able to do that and we can't do that because they're on the rights and we don't have any software to.
But, yeah, you can click on it, you know, have one of those teachers show how to click on. Maybe we could show you how it works.
Yeah, because we can actually print and everything.
But you can see owns and it works.
But we could make something more.
Make the lines.
Available to anybody in town that wants to come and look at this.
It's a hard one because it is small, even on onyx, you know.
It's not really trying to hide anything, but make it.
Difficult to get all those names and stuff. But it is public access, you can't get on.
Yeah. And it could be to everybody.
Yeah, everybody can get.
Anybody can get on the county's website and look up any parcel information they want to in Washington County. It's just figuring out how to work the website. Me too. Trial by fire.
So, it's up right now, there is no proposal for developments coming in or doing anything out for the impact.
No, we've got to just define the impact area first and get that, you know, settled with the commissioners. We're hoping, depending on what happens tonight, to go to the commissioners real soon and show them our proposal. And I think they'll be pleased because we're trying to take some agricultural land out of it, actually. And then also talk to them about a new ordinance about going by our comprehensive plan and our zoning and our subdivision ordinance.
It'd be interesting to see the animal ordinance that I referenced because, you know, in Ava County where we got annexed to Boise, we, it was one of those things where people grandfather in with their livestock. You know, because now when you say, "Oh, no, you can only have one horse," or "You can have horse," or "Now you have goats," or "Now you can't." You know, it's just, it's kind of hard for people that have that acreage that is not within, you know, or further than that.
I think that is probably true, something we would have to look at in our animal ordinance, not necessarily these ordinances, but we do go by certain land area and things. And we might have to have a separate one for the impact area compared to the city limits.
Yeah.
I have a question. Is this your proposal that you would like, or is this what the county is saying is the current impact area?
No, it's our proposal of what we want to retract to, because we currently.
And how we want to count.
Yeah, we currently have the four sections. And that's, and that's what we want to pull it down to and the county has to approve it.
So, this is a reduction or something else?
Absolutely.
Okay, so this, this shows the whole one where this is the four sections. And, but this isn't, this is a different, you know, it's a. But, so basically, this is the four sections here.
Really?
I know, but.
The county thinking, maybe to do something or to ban our mistment too. That's not true.
But most people go online to see it so they can zoom in on the place, so.
Yeah.
That's old. The guidelines that you read, are those in ordinance or state statute?
State statute.
They are in state statute.
State statute, town 37, or 67, it's 67, 65, 26.
Like for five years?
Five years. And I think that's because the legislature thought that some cities were trying to, you know, designate a bigger impact area than what they really needed and was taking the primary out too fast.
Is the comprehensive plan, does that have the same status as, as far as the values? You know, if it's ordinance, is it a recommendation, is it a something passed?
Well, every city and every county has their own comprehensive plan. And, you know, that's passed and, and your comprehensive plan is what drives everything that you do. Everything has to be in line with your comprehensive plan or it's not legal. So, if you want to change your thinking.
I mean.
The same, the land use planning requires a comprehensive plan.
We have, I'm required by law.
Yeah.
But if, I think that if we were to find a development coming in, a thing we hadn't quite thought of or slightly different, we can change the comprehensive plan if that.
Isn't it a matter of recommendation of what growth wise that has not been told zone?
Adopt. The, the comprehensive plans have just applied to what, you know, you think you would like to see. Boos.
Yeah. Because it's just a guess.
There is deadline that you have to have this finished.
We're required to have things finished with the county by January 1st of 2025. But we want to try to get things in place because we've had some issues as far as. We have a year to get this done.
Twenty-two.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's what I was thinking too, I was like, we're one month late.
Yeah, we got to hurry.
Yeah. It's the agricultural protection ordinance that the county's putting in place right now. They're required to have it in place by January 2025. Which kind of plays into this, you know, a little bit.
I kind of look at agricultural protection as a defense mechanism or a property owner that doesn't want to be annexed. That's kind of how I look at it. Because they can put it in that bank and then we can annex it.
But it doesn't have to be agricultural, don't they, you using it and growing something or a house or anything?
I don't know what the regulations are as far as that goes, it's just agricultural.
House zone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which Washington County is changing if they're not using it, they're changing it.
There's not one more out here that's not being used.
Yeah, some of the no farther out properties that used to be ranch land, they're all looking to bring some of that. They pull the town off.
Well, one reason we're looking at trying to speed this up and we want to go through our planning and zoning code because a lot of it's outdated and stuff too and try to get things in line because growth is coming. But we've been holding some hearings on different properties in our impact area. And every answer we have to give the county, I mean, we, we had the hearing instead of Washington County Planning and Zoning. But every time it's like, "Well, yeah, their proposal meets your ordinances, but it doesn't meet ours." And basically, we spend a lot of time and money basically saying, "Yeah, it meets your ordinance. Here you go, approve it," you know, type of thing. Because it meets your ordinance, they have to go off to their ordinance. And it's kind of, you know, causes a little confusion because we both have different ideas of how we want that done. And then also, we have some possibility of some developers that might be interested in coming, I've been told, but they don't want to work with the county only to stay approved. Don't know exactly why, but it's costly to work with.
Very costly.
I guess we need to raise our rates then.
So, we were hoping if it would be my article that gradually it could expand and be a little bit more consistent. Either that or we're going to have to. Either that, or we're going to have to maybe turn the plant, the impact area over just to the county, because it's really not, doesn't do us a lot of good to hold the hearings. I mean, that's my thought.
I concur.
I guess a lot of nice, you know, just thinking about it super quick, is if you guys are, you know, actually using your ordinances, you guys already know your territory, you know most of the people. You understand if something needs to be changed just slightly. You know, as long as everything is done correctly, but you, we, you know, have nice little battles with P and Z in the county, and they don't understand. They don't understand the demographics that you're coming from, that people like are coming from. There's no representation.
Yeah.
So it is kind of nice to, you know, listen to people and see, see how you feel after.
Just remember, you know, just listen to the, the actor, what we need to hear.
Well, if the council's in currents that you want the mayor and I to go ahead and go to a commissioners' meeting and introduce this to the commissioners, our city attorney said he'd be on the call with us when we present to the commissioners, so he can talk to them about it too. It's whether you want to do that, or you have more refining you want to do.
Well, it's good to me, I mean, I'm sure that once it's presented to commissioners, they can change it. And they'll come back and, you know, change it.
Well, I'm sure that there's probably going to be things we need to change and stuff, but I do, I've had conversations with all of the commissioners, and they are very interested in, in what we have to be proposed and...
And have the certificate developed?
Yeah.
To bring the motion? To present the motion to have the mayor and clerk, the district, to Washington County Commissioners?
Second. Let's move the second along, Mayor.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion here.
Okay, can we timeout for one second?
Timeout.
I'm having recording issues, and it doesn't seem like it's doing what it's supposed to, so give me a second.